We're going to call this meeting to order at 5:33. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 6:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Trustee Water, do we have any public comment on closed session items?
We do not.
We appreciate that. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
Oh, we do. First speaker is Claire McConnell. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Claire McConnell. I am commenting on the closed session item of meeting with attorneys in private regarding the Maya Commis Charter. I'm just confirming this is part of the closed session item before I comment.
We don't respond. We just listen during public comment.
Also, you guys need to turn your volumes up because I can barely hear you and my phone's on high. Um, so I have three daughters in the Napa Valley Unified School District. I have one in third grade and then two in middle school, one at Unidos and one at Redwood. The transition from River to Unidos has been pleasantly and surprisingly good. She's enjoying it and we've been happy with that transition. I am absolutely disgusted, disappointed with Redwood Middle School and am one of the proponents for Maya Commis Charter. There are constant fights at that school. My daughter has straight A's in her first trimester. She was also awarded Student of the Month, so this is nothing to do with her. The school is rundown. The teachers are oblivious and parents want something more. We see continuous participation in the Maya Commis Charter portal and in our Facebook page. Parents constantly asking questions, wanting to know when they're going to be times that they can see the school and what options there are for them. You are missing what parents want in this community. It is very disappointing that you are using taxpayer money after just passing a bond to use an attorney to go against what parents want. Redwood is not at a good place. I promise you, we are wildly disappointed. And Unidos is not a pathway that she wants. She does not want her elective to be Spanish. It is our only option and our friends who go to Silverado are also incredibly disappointed. There are constant fights. This school is over capacity. It's falling apart. The teachers are over it. We have a teacher that's been there for 27 years. He's like in pure apathy. You're not listening to parents. They want this school to happen. Please listen to us and know that this is a pathway that some parents want and need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Maureen T. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. This is Maureen Tannison. I have two students in at Napa High. I'm a supporter of Maya Commis. I'm calling in because I'm absolutely disgusted that you are wasting taxpayer money on fighting parents, once again, parents and students, and basing your decision on what's best for adults instead of what's best for children. These parents have come to you over and over and over again asking for you to work with them to come up with something that works for their children and their families. And you continually deny them any sense of, you know, anything. You're denying everything. Plus, you've cut everything that you said you were going to cut anyway. At this point, you've cut music at Unidos, you cut orchestra programs across the district. You've cut a lot of things. You canceled contracts with the district, with the county, even though you said that not passing this would change that, and it did. It's all adding up to intimidation. You have led this district into a very combative and intimidated place, and it's time to stop. Stop the madness. The parents are furious, and that's why the Napa bond is not passing. The Napa bond will not pass because you do not have the support of your community because you are not talking to the people you need to talk to. So I'm asking you, please reconsider suing the state, wasting taxpayer dollars. Like, it's time to move on. The charter school law is very clear and that there is an option, there is a pathway for parents to have another solution within the public school, and they are to be encouraged. Charters are not illegal in this state. And the law that you're trying to pursue does not make them illegal. So you need to please consider the fact that all the other surrounding areas have charter schools. And the fact that you took out all of our charter schools and left the parents with no options means that more and more parents will leave this system. This is the most rapid decline in our history. And the test scores are abysmal, and they prove it, and they were declining even before COVID. Now it's horrible, absolutely horrible. Like, we're on a race to the bottom right now. So please reconsider what you're doing. Invest more heavily in our students. Stop this madness of suing the state. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Wendy Beltrami. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. I know I won't get a response since this is public comment and not a Q and A, but I just have to ask, who thinks it's a good idea to spend taxpayer money on more litigation, fighting something that Napa families want and need? It seems to me you should be cutting your losses after the bond failure and moving to find out why families are not staying in NVUSD schools. You can continue to say that families are leaving because they are moving out of Napa, but the truth is local families are looking for options. I'm asking that you do your due diligence to find out why families are unhappy instead of spending more of our money fighting against what the community wants. You erased River School in favor of a new program that frankly you seem to be ignoring. Have any of you visited the Unidos website lately? Click around. Try all the links. Half of them still go to River School. One of them goes to the River School Archive page. Several of them are blank. There's one link that says, hey, families, if you parents would like to join our LPAC committee, call Principal Kathy Adams. Guess what? She's not the principal. For that kind of detail to be overlooked for a program that is something that you've touted as being so valuable and so important, it seems like you're not paying attention to what you created that you thought families wanted. That's a mixed message. So again, listen to what families want. And stop this madness, wasting more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Carrie. Please state your full name and go ahead, please. Actually, it looks like Carrie is using an older version of Zoom, which she'll need to update her Zoom and be able to speak.
Thank you. Why don't we take that moment then to call Gail Young to the podium for public comment?
Good evening, President Jankowicz, trustees, Dr. Masetti, and members of the Napa Valley Unified School District community. It was disappointing for the health of our district, our community, and the students we educate that the State Board of Education elected to ignore the requirements of the law with the decision to find an abuse of discretion with no supporting facts. It is CTA's position that the State Board committed legal error by approving the charter petition and that a legal challenge to this decision is warranted. I implore you to go forward with litigation. What does it say about our profession when the State Board disregards the law? Please make it right.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Michaels, do we have additional public comment?
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing that there's no more public comment, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you very much, and we will we will probably see you a little bit after 6 o'clock. Let's shoot for, yeah, let's shoot for 6:15. Thank you very much. Open session at 6:22. Good evening. My name is Robin Jankowicz, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all may participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Ecedra Mancos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Si, buenas tardes. Esta es la reunión del Distrito escolar unificado de Napa Valley. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación simultánea al español por vía Zoom. Para poder acceder a los servicios de interpretación, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono del globo terráqueo. Pueden hacer clic allí y escoger el idioma español o Spanish. Si están en su teléfono móvil, van a ver tres puntitos y dice "more" o "más". Allí van a encontrar la opción de interpretación y pueden escoger español o Spanish. Gracias.
Gracias. May we please start with an attendance roll call from Julie Pressey, Executive Assistant.
Yes. Student Board Member Gomez is absent. Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris is absent. Trustee Chu?
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Today's meeting is a special meeting of the board, and there will be no public comment on non-agenda items. You may make public comment on agendized items only. We are going to start with a flag salute. Would our audience, since we have an audience, like to lead us in a flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. May I please get a motion on the approval of the special session agenda?
So moved.
First by Trustee Gracia. Second, second by Trustee Reiser. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda passes. Yes, and Trustee Water? Do you have anything to report out from closed session?
I do. In closed session, the NVUSD Board of Education voted unanimously on a motion by Trustee Gracia, seconded by Trustee Chu, to authorize our superintendent and general counsel to initiate legal action against the California State Board of Education to challenge the State Board's decision to overrule the decisions by our district and the Napa County Board of Education to deny the Maya Commis Charter middle school position.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're going to move to action items. General Services, Resolution 2314, authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361 in Government Code Section 54953.
So moved.
First by Trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by Trustee Chu. Ms. Pressey, do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Michaels?
There's no public comment on this item.
Ms. Pressey, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the second item under General Services, 2023 California School Board Association, CSBA, Delegate Assembly Candidate Nomination. One moment, please. Tried so hard to get this up. Speaking. Thank you. I would like to nominate Trustee Gracia for the CSBA Delegate Assembly. Trustee Gracia has ably represented the County of Napa over the past year and a half. He meets regularly with the various districts in Napa to better understand the interests of all the districts in the county prior to attending each of the two yearly district assembly meetings. These meetings have been instrumental in facilitating his ability to advocate for the interests of the county as a whole so that CSBA policy can better reflect the interests of our county. He regularly attends lobbying efforts with the CSBA to lobby our local legislators and has twice facilitated the meeting with our state elected leaders. The Region Three Director, along with his Delegate Assembly peers, have recognized the hard work and dedication he has put into representing Napa County and have recommended that he join the Legislative Action Committee. Excuse me. Starting in 2023, he will be able to advocate even more strongly for the interests of Napa County schools through his position on that committee. I would like to see Napa County not lose this valuable link to the broader CSBA community and therefore move that we nominate Trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by Trustee Reiser. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
Presentations and discussion items. Instruction Services, we are going to hear this evening on elementary literacy presentation. Mr. Manning, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings.
You have to turn it on.
It's my first time presenting from this spot instead of over at my seat. So, good evening, President Jankowicz, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and the NVUSD community. The Instructional Support Services Division is excited to engage with you this evening in an immersive learning experience for this board study session on our elementary literacy program. Can we bring up the slides, please? Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. There we go. Facilitating your learning this evening are fabulous, is our fabulous Matt Manning, Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services. Also, our dynamic district academic specialist, Kristen Gerhardt, Harley Miller, and Tracy Weiss will also be presenting, and three amazing classroom teachers, Tracy Sims from Canyon Oaks, Rebecca Loco from Willow, and Christina Lawrence from Brown's Valley. Our presentation this evening aligns with Goal One of our strategic plan, which is focused on student learning, achievement, and access. Learning to read is a critical foundational skill for all students to be able to access curriculum as they matriculate through our schools. The study session will also highlight our work on Board Priorities Two and Three. These two board priorities support student learning and achievement. Increasing the amount of high-quality Tier One instruction begins with a solid instructional pedagogy. Tonight, you will hear about our research-based approach to teaching students how to read called the Science of Reading. Additionally, literacy is a key element of our early learning programs. We know that students who are reading on grade level by third grade are able to successfully shift from learning to read to reading to learn, a key transition that happens in the third grade. As an instructional and organizational practice, we often start our meetings with some kind of connection or grounding activity. So to begin our immersive learning experience with our Board of Trustees, I want to start with a connection activity. So since we are talking about early literacy and literacy in general and how students learn to read, I want to ask this question of you. Do you remember the first book that you ever read on your own? So, if so, what was it? While you're thinking about that, I will share my response to that question. I actually remember reading Go Dog Go and Are You My Mother by P.D. Eastman when I was probably around six years old. Is there anyone else that would like to share?
I can't recall.
I'm a little old, so.
Are you my mother?
Oh.
Mine is also, are you my mother? You are not my mother. You are a snort.
Yes. Well, I have to share that I learned Chinese first. So I learned to read in Chinese. I don't remember what book it was, but I just remember a Dr. Seuss book is one of my first hands as well.
Yeah. Yes. Anyone else want to share?
The Tale of Two Bad Mice by Beatrix Potter.
You know what? I thought it was two cities because.
Well, you know, also, Winnie the Pooh was up there too, but I was really young. I wasn't even in school yet.
So, thank you all for sharing. Now I'm going to pass to Director Manning, who will share about our learning intentions this evening.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. Good evening, President Jankowicz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and the NVUSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to take a deep dive into literacy development at the elementary level this evening. We're very excited to present with you, to you. So to provide the board and the NVUSD, excuse me, our objectives for this evening are number one, to provide the board and NVUSD community with an overview of local, state, and national literacy achievement. We will provide the most recent national assessment of educational proficiency data that's administered to fourth through eighth and eighth grade students. Last year, that was administered throughout the country. One of the schools where that assessment was administered was actually Canyon Oaks in fourth grade. We'll also look at English Language Arts CASP results at the state and local level to provide context for our discussion and to illuminate the national literacy crisis that we are responding to locally to improve literacy outcomes for our students. There we go. You will hear about the Science of Reading Research, including information about how the brain learns to read. You will also develop an understanding of how we are aligning with the Science of Reading Research in NVUSD. We have been engaging teachers, coaches, and administrators in professional learning and support with this alignment. We will spend the bulk of our time on that this evening along with how our curriculum and assessment tools support student learn. So first up this evening, we are going to begin with an activity that will require everyone to get up and engage with some content around the room. We have three chat stations, each with information related to our study of literacy. So our first chat station is here, second station, and third station here. So at the first station, there is some general literacy statistics to review and discuss. At the second station, there are posters with our NAEP and CASP data that I referenced earlier. And at the third station, you will discuss and write your reaction to a quote about how children learn to read. You'll spend about three minutes at each station and add your thoughts to each poster before moving on to the next station. So in the spirit of building high-quality interactions, which is a focus for us in NVUSD this year, we would ask that you add your own thoughts and then respond to or build on the thoughts of those who have come before you at the poster. Okay, so we'll divide up into three groups. The first group will start at Station One, and that first group will be President Jankowicz, Trustee Gracia, and Dr. Masetti. The second group will begin at Station Two, Trustee Water, Kelly Miller, and Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, again at Station Two. Trustee Reiser and Chu and Director Monica Reddy will begin at Station Three. So at the end of the rotation, you'll return to your original, you can get up and you'll return to your original station and see the thoughts that have been shared by your colleagues. So, and be ready to have a representative share out a summary statement. So go ahead and migrate to your stations. Excited to go. Go ahead and migrate. And just a note, a word for the participants who are joining us virtually. The trustees will be away from their microphones for about 10 to 12 minutes, so you won't hear what they are discussing. Okay, so go ahead and migrate to your station. If you need a reminder of who your group is, you can come to me. It's just kind of sticky, yeah.
Or maybe. No. They got it. This is one. And then I'll map it. But now it's mine. So. I have three options. So those things, one, those things, two, do these things, three. And then. Station three, we're looking at one, two, three. So that. You know. One thing. Yeah. It's. It's. Yeah. I'm in. Three. Um. No. I'm in. Good. God. Whoa. There you go. I think he thinks. He doesn't. I don't know. Oh. And I'm. Oh. It's. That's. Funny. I'm like. Well. Without. That. But um. They say. And. Uh. They were. They were. Was. They. All. Um. Maybe. Maybe. So. And it's what I call. A. Whatever. It's. It's. I'm. It's. Probably. Um. That's. I was. I'm. On. Oh, the. The. Oh. Yeah. I think. It's. What? All right. Pretty. Yeah. Yeah. I think. It's. I think. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Well. On. First. Where. It's. Thank you. Stop. Like. In. The. And I can. I think. Of course. The. And. It's. Well, it is. Yes. It's. Me. I would. Kind of. It's. Absolutely. I can do. I can. And. So. Thank you. For. Looking. Hopefully. Certainly. I'm. Actually. But. The. I mean. The. Part. Not. Yeah. Okay. They were doing. A little. One. Last year. I had to change. The. Word. I don't know. This. I don't. I. That's. Okay. I'm. I mean. But. All. It's. Okay. It's. Um. Again. Yeah. I was. Right. And it's. Giving. A. Question. For. This. One. I. The. This. I'm. Or. I think. You. I'm. I want. To. I. That's. I'm. 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 Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for engaging in, in that activity. Hopefully that was, opened up your, your eyes and minds and, and got you thinking about reading instruction. So we'll begin with our, share out a summary statement. So who ended, who wants to speak to someone who ended at chat station one?
Yeah, sure, I will. So our summation there was that at the end of the day, reading is a critical life skill that negatively, lack of reading will negatively impact both your earning capacity in a severe way and also your physical and mental health. Yeah, it really is detrimental to your quality of life if you don't have those skills and a large portion of Americans do not have them.
Thank you. So the impacts are far reaching. Okay, chat station number two representative.
That was us, right? Okay, chat station number two was test scores, which are not terrific. And that would be, we were looking at third and fourth grade test scores. And actually, third grade was pretty close to the, to the state average, which was what, 42%? You know, we're reading at grade level and, and we are just slightly behind that. But then there's a five-point gap on fourth grade. And we were chatting about how, well, gee, these children had not exactly been in school during the time when they're supposed to be developing literacy. And it's, we're not really surprised by it. And we want to help them catch up. And we can help them catch up because young children's brains are like sponges and they learn very, they can learn very quickly.
Thank you very much. And as we learned at chat station one, 95% of children can learn to read with the right instruction. Okay, chat station number three representative.
Okay, I'll report out on three. That was the quote about how our brains are hardwired for talking, but not hardwired to learn to read, for reading. And so therefore it has to be an intentional process of instruction. And so the comments there really focused on, first of all, it also talked about how reading comprehension was a process that took the rest of, you know, eight to 12 years of schooling after you get the basic tools down. So I thought that, we thought that was really interesting and, and just spoke to the importance of being patient and, and strategic and just building on the student's skills and why, why that makes it so important to integrate literacy into all content areas. And we were chatting about, in particular, the Amplify Science model that, that integrates literacy instruction with science content instruction and how powerful that synergy is. And the thing that came to mind for me was also just the importance of integrating oral language into reading instruction because if that's what our brains are hardwired for, then that, you know, the model for Amplify, when I worked on it at least, was read, write, talk, do. You know, that's how you really get the knowledge in there and the, the learning happening. And so that quote just underscored the importance for me of oral, oral language has to play in reading instruction.
It's a critical element. Yes, thank you. So that, that discussion around the fact that we don't learn to read in the same way we naturally learn to speak leads us right into our next conversation around the science of reading and why we are taking this approach in NVUSD. So we're going to jump into the science of reading research as we prepare to explore how these best practices play a critical work role in the work that we're doing as a district to improve literacy outcomes for students. We're going to take about seven minutes to learn about the science of reading using a video clip that was embedded into our letters training that was provided to a group of teachers. Letters is the acronym for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling and is a professional learning experience that we will discuss more in depth as we move through the presentation. When we watched this video and shared this with teachers, taking part in the letters training, we felt like it was a very clear, excellent, highly comprehensible overview of the science of reading, including the reading brain, the simple view of reading and Scarborough's rope, which you'll learn more about in the video. So we will be referencing both the simple view of reading and Scarborough's rope frequently throughout the presentation. So you'll see posters of those two models here on the wall. Okay, so let's go ahead and watch and learn about the science of reading. If you want to go ahead and start the video, please.
What is the science of reading? S O R is a vast interdisciplinary body of scientifically-based research about reading. This conclusive empirically studied body of research informs us about how students learn to read, how to intervene when students aren't successful in reading skills, and what kind of instruction works best for most students. To better understand what is meant by the science of reading, I'd like to share some of the concepts that teachers learn in letters. And here is where it starts, in the brain. Are you aware that our brains aren't wired for reading? We're not born with the ability to read. Through functional MRIs, neuroscience has shed light on the reading brain and shown us that it's all about the left hemisphere of the brain, where there are four distinct areas that work in concert with one another to make reading possible. Let's unpack this a little further. Each lobe in the brain has a primary function as it relates to reading. The frontal lobe is the phonological processor, processing speech, sounds and language. We use this area to think about pronouncing written words. The occipital lobe helps process what our eyes see. This relates to the visual information such as circles, squiggles and lines that we eventually realize make up letters, patterns of letters and words. When we learn to read, this area starts recognizing words by sight. The parietal lobe is where phoneme grapheme association is processed. That's the sound symbol connections where written symbols connect to the sounds we know like phonics. The temporal lobe is the meaning processor. It facilitates access to our semantic network where we process and make meaning of the language we see in print. Since students are not wired to learn how to read, they require instruction that activates the neural network or circuitry in their brains. For example, direct explicit instruction in phoneme grapheme or sound symbol connections build bridges to the other parts in the brain. In essence, teachers are bridge builders that help students activate all parts of the reading brain. We can look at the ultimate goal of reading through a research validated framework called the simple view of reading. This well-validated concept lies at the heart of understanding reading instruction. Created by Goff and Tunmer in 1986, this formula serves as a broad reference to the complexity of reading. We can all agree that reading comprehension is the ultimate goal of reading. So let's start there. According to this model, reading comprehension is the product of two domains, word recognition and language comprehension. If a student is proficient in both word recognition and language comprehension, the result is reading comprehension. If a student is not proficient in word recognition, but is. but is good at language comprehension, the student will not be able to comprehend what they read. For example, have you ever taught a student who cannot decode and access the words on the page? Yet during whole group read aloud time, they can answer questions about the story and anticipate what might happen next? In the simple view of reading math problem scenario, this student would score a zero in word recognition times a one in language comprehension, but the result of reading comprehension is still zero. Likewise, if a student is proficient in word recognition, but lacks language comprehension, the result is the same, unable to comprehend. For example, I took Spanish in high school and college many years ago. Because the Spanish language uses the equivalent of one grapheme to one phoneme with a couple of exceptions, I could still read Spanish in print with prosody. However, if you ask me about what I've read, I would have to guess as I'm no longer fluent in the language and don't have a grasp of the vocabulary. In the simple view of reading model, I would score a one in word recognition times a zero in language comprehension, but the result of reading comprehension is still a zero. This illustrates the point that students must have proficiency in both components of the model to become readers who can comprehend. While this allows us to look at the big picture from a simple view, there are many skills that fit within these two areas. Let's go a little deeper into the complexity of learning to read. This is Scarborough's rope. Researcher Dr. Hollis Scarborough used the metaphor of a rope with its many strands to explain the complexity of reading to parents and educators. This model illustrates the progressive interweaving of the skills needed for proficient reading. Take a look, the elements of the simple view of reading are there. The bottom of the rope is word recognition. And the top of the rope is language comprehension. The word recognition strands, phonological awareness, decoding and side recognition of familiar words work together as the reader becomes more accurate and increasingly automatic with explicit instruction, repetition and practice. The finite tasks in this strand should be developed by third grade, but we know this is often not the case. Concurrently, the language comprehension strands, background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning and literacy knowledge reinforce one another. Instruction in these strands begins at birth and never stops developing through oral language, then written language and across all content areas and experiences. Over time, these varied skills develop and connect. Word recognition strands become increasingly automatic and language comprehension over time becomes increasingly strategic and work in concert with one another. The simple view of reading tells us that weakness in one domain cannot be overcome by strength in another domain. The reading rope illustrates that weakness in any of the strands will impact the strength of the domain as well as the strength of the rope as a whole.
Microphone, thank you. So this image, am I playing the video again? We move to the next slide. There we go. Okay, so this image that is in front of you now is the ladder of reading and writing. And this image helps to convey why we are embracing the science of reading research that you just learned about in NVSD. Nancy Young created this image, the ladder of reading and writing, which highlights just how critical structured literacy is for the majority of our students. So when we say structured literacy, what we mean is literacy that is instruction that is systematic, sequential and explicit. When we say systematic and sequential, it means that we are following a logical scope and sequence, which begins with the easiest and most basic concepts first, progressing through to the more difficult elements. When we say explicit, we mean that we are teaching it in a way that fully explains to students what we want them to learn. We're very clear about what it exactly is, what exactly is the end goal for students. And looking at the top of this graphic in the beginning of the top in the green area, you'll see that we do have between five and 10% of students who are going to learn to read without a lot of, of instruction. Reading seems to come naturally for those students regardless of the instruction that's provided to them. Then when we move down the ladder, we see that we have about 35% of our students for whom, whom would, who would greatly benefit from this structured literacy instruction. And then we have 60% where systematic, sequential and explicit instruction is absolutely essential for them to learn to read. So while structured literacy is beneficial for all of our students, up to, again, up to 60% of our students just won't to learn to read without it. And this includes many of our students who are multilingual learners and students with IEPs require this level of instruction. So we'll begin by looking at K2 tier one instruction and illustrate how we're addressing this in NVSD. And I'll introduce Carly Miller to take us through the K2 journey.
All right. So we're going to, as you saw in the video, we're going to reference Scarborough's rope over here. Dr. Hollis Scarborough created this rope. And as you saw in the video, it really is the backbone of good literacy instruction. It's how we can address that structured literacy that Matt was just talking about. We will use this as a frame for our, how we address literacy in NVSD. We'll learn, we'll look at that tonight and this will really guide sort of how we support and what curriculum we use to support that work. So we're going to start on the lower strand. And we're going to start with that word recognition, which was explained really well in the video. So I'm just going to reinforce some of the pieces that we're looking at. And then we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like in our instruction. Well, so the first part of the word recognition rope there is phonological awareness and it refers to oral language. So if you could just touch your ears, that's what our students are using. We're not tying it to eyes yet. We're just using the ears. And that is really what we're hearing and saying. And I, I resonate a lot with what you were saying about the oral language piece in which we talked about, because that is what we come to. That's where our students come to some richer oral language experiences than others. So then we move to the decoding. And when we move into the decoding portion, that requires the knowledge of the alphabetic principle. The alphabetic principle is the relations between the sounds of spoken words and the letters that represent them. So when we were looking at that brain image, really making a connection between the frontal and in the back lobe there. This is commonly referred to as phonics. And the third and final strand you're going to see there is sight recognition, which is the, which is when we need students to instantly recognize automatically and effortlessly without sounding out or without guessing. We need them to just have those. And so we'll talk about how we explicitly teach that. So as we look at those lower strands of word recognition and how they come together, the practice becomes increasingly automatic. You'll see that arrow and that's when we know students are on the road to becoming fluent in decoding. So when we talk about that, one thing we realized about three years ago was our phonics component of our current curriculum was not, it did not provide enough rich opportunities for our students to practice and apply those phonics skills. We then moved to make the purchase of benchmark phonics, which supports with more practice and application opportunities for students in order to allow them to become more automatic with those word recognition skills. Okay, so we want to talk about our tier one instruction. What does it look like in our K2 classrooms? What do our students experience daily? So we begin with phonological awareness. Again, touching your ears, we give, we, they, we come with the words like hat and they have to understand that there's a that are in those. We count those sounds, we manipulate those sounds, we play with those sounds and we do it just with our ears first, because that's where we've come with that oral language. We then move into, into framing that for students with the sound spelling correspondence. We use the sound spelling cards that are hung up in all of our classrooms. If you've seen lots of pictures of them. And what that does is it gives them a frame for, it's a mnemonic, so sun, right? And we say the sound and then we look at the spellings. So what we're doing is we're making that frame for students to connect the sounds, the oral language, language portion to the letters. So we're making that explicit instruction happen around the sound spelling correspondence. And then we move into blending and building words. We're going to talk about that when we look at blending and building words. We associate the letters with the sounds. We're going to mimic this activity in a second. And then we go into spelling and dictation. We'll go back here. Once they've gotten the sounds, we now need to make, we now need to make sure they're connecting those spelling patterns to that sound as they come across that. And then they have to spell it or write it out with their own pencil, then they are really internalizing that process. Then we move into application, reading, writing. This is a big one for us. This is making sure that they can now do it in context. That means they have a decodable or a controlled text that they're working in that focuses on practicing that pattern. Then they're doing some writing with that pattern. And then we move into last but not least, high frequency words. So high frequency words, we need to explicitly teach. Those are our irregular words. For example, a word like was, if we were to sound that out and have never have seen that letter connection, we would spell it W U Z, right? Was. And we explicitly teach that it's W A S. We do some chance, we connect that because we know if they're able to do that, then they're going to become increasingly automatic readers. All right. So now you get to experience a little bit of this. In front of you is a mat. So if you can put that mat in front of you, it looks like this. And we're going to use that in just a second. And if you can get three of the coins out for me, I think we have four out there for you, but just three. Oh, perfect. Got one? Everyone got one? All right. Always, it's key to have the resources. All right. Actually, I realized before we get there, now that you guys are getting everything organized, I want to talk really quickly about multilingual learners and how we're supporting our multilingual learners. So one of the big things that early, that our multilingual learners need, an additional extra scoop, as we'll say, they need early explicit intensive phonics instruction. And they really need to be able to have more of it, review, practice, structure. And again, and then the big thing we really talk about is how we leverage their similarities and differences in their home language. You'll reference that sound spelling card as I was mentioning earlier. You'll see there's a green band around the card and that's telling teachers and students that that's a similar sound in Spanish and English. So when we talk about bicycle, we make the B sound and bicicleta, it makes the B sound. So when we're talking with students, we want them to be able to tap into that home language. So we're doing that work with them. But similarly or different, now we have to take, make some differences there. So now, for example, and when we talk about the short I sound, the eh sound that we make, there is no corresponding sound in Spanish that has that. So we need to explicitly teach around that. Then lastly, we want to provide that structured scaffolded academic talk as you guys were just doing at those chat stations, being intentional about it. So that is sort of how we're supporting our multilingual learners through that tier one instruction. So let's go ahead and experience it. You got your mats out. So the first thing I want you to do is actually put your hand up because we're going to actually just count some phonemes. So here you're going to put your hands up and we're going to tap some fingers. Okay. So the word I'm going to give you is map. What's the word? Map. Perfect. Sounded out for me. Hmm. Ah. How many sounds? Perfect. You guys are experts. The next one is ship. Ship. How many sounds? Three. Very good. So we move from that phoneme counting into making some connections. So in front of you, you have your coins. And we're going to push the sounds. So I'm going to give you another word and I want you to push and segment the sounds. So for example, if it's map, you're going to push into your, they're called Elkanen boxes. You're going to push those in. And I'm, so that is kind of that tactile, that multimodal. So I'm going to give you a word and are you ready? We're ready. And the word is lap. Push lap for me. Lap. Very good. Let's try another one. Ship. Good. So now we've taken it out of our ear and we're tactile with it. We're making those connections. We know we have learners that learn different ways. We're needing to make that repetition, that practice form, make it engaging and interesting. So then we move into connecting the letter and grapheme. So we begin to make that connection between the sound and, and the letter. So I'm going to have you do a similar practice here. I'm going to tap and you're going to say the sound for me. Sound. 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 Blend. Beautiful. We have a picture too, a reference of those. So now let's bring this down and we're going to do this next one, this sound. Oh, sound. 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 Blend. Beautiful. And the last one, we're going to go ahead and do, the first sound is C. So we're actually taking that word, that chunk and blending it as we go. Now here's the last one and a trickier one for us here. And I have a picture just in case you don't know what it is. Here we go. Sound. So one thing I want to note there, what is the SH doing? It's on the same card, right? Yeah. So when we talk about ship, how many sounds were in ship? Exactly. How many letters are in ship? Ooh, tricky. So that's what we yeah, you nailed it. And so when we put those together, that is called a digraph and we have to teach that explicitly. So when Matt was talking earlier about the structured literacy, those are the kind of pieces we talk about. We figure it out and then we, we reinforce that because kids will come across that and they'll go, oh, wait a minute. So that shh makes two sounds, two letters make one sound, shh, and understanding that. All right. So now we go, we navigate here through into connected text after this. And really the key important thing here is that the text be decodable, that it's a pattern text that they can practice what you just did in. And we'll look, take a look at what that looks like. But the key is learning should be multimodal. We need our eyes, our ears and our fingers because we know we need to reinforce that for ourselves. We need to interact with the sounds and build words as you were doing. Learning should have built in repetition and ample practice for mastery of these skills. So we need it again in different ways. And you kind of experienced a little bit of that and how we progress in touching those, bringing those sounds and letters together explicitly. So now we're going to take a look at a video of some of our friends from McPherson, one of our elementary schools, and they are focusing on something you guys just did, counting and segmenting sounds. Nest. Perfect. How many sounds? Four. Here we go. Okay, ready? Here's another we're going to use with the coins. Vest. So they were doing the counting and segmenting you guys were doing. And as we move beyond that, we move into ride. Oh, here we go. We move into that next phase. So this is a consumable our students use in the classroom. This is a first grade example. And you'll see that they've listed some words from the text. They're doing a rewrite, rewrite portion here. And then under that dictation piece, you'll see that they're beginning to connect the letters and the sounds together. In this case, there's a long I sound. So in bike, how many sounds? Bike. Three sounds, but four letters. And that's where we talk about that silent E. And so we begin to connect those for them and then they do their own words. We give them a word, they have to write it down. So they're really solidifying that pattern in the brain. Then we move from there into a decodable text. As I mentioned, you'll see here, what they've done is starting to highlight that long I pattern. They're really making that connection. We know we need to see it in context and more practice is what we need. And then they've boxed their high frequency words here, making the connections that they need to know those words and interact with them. And then lastly, as we move, really getting them to write it, right? That's that full transfer piece when we can see them actually write those words out and making the connection. write those words out and making the connections that the E is making the A say its name in that case. All right. So want to talk quickly about the other side of the rope, the language comprehension and what that looks like in K two. Because that doesn't start in second or third grade. It starts in kindergarten and we know it's best there. And so this first text is an example of a mentor read that we have in first grade. And what you'll notice here is that we are able to hit the language comprehension strands by touching on literacy knowledge, which is concepts of print vocabulary and modeling what good readers do. So exposing them to the text, showing them what we do with the text and really making connections for them and understanding because we need to do both sides of the rope. Or as we looked at the simple view of reading, word recognition and language comprehension, one times zero equals zero, right? So we really are working on those pieces early on in K one and two. Then you'll move into this phonics text, which we also use. That was a, the previous slide had a picture of that. This is where students are making connections between understanding what they're reading and then being able to practice that reading piece. The big thing I wanted to mention here too, is that our current curriculum benchmark does a really good job of helping teachers have texts that begins to build a broader content knowledge. Kirsten's going to talk more about that shortly, but giving them multiple exposures of a text at a young age. So with that, I'm going to pass it now to Tracy. And she's going to take us through the language comprehension portion and how that plays out in our tier one instruction in the upper grades.
Okay. So word recognition on its own does not create fluent and skilled readers. If students don't understand what the majority of the words mean, then they aren't truly reading. So as move to the upper grades, our focus is going to shift to the upper part of the rope, language comprehension. The language comprehension strand is comprised of five smaller strands. So we have background knowledge, vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning and literacy knowledge. These strands, along with the word recognition strand weave together to become the rope that represents skilled reading. All the components are interconnected and interdependent. So that means if just one strand is weak, it affects the reader as a whole. So it's critical that our literacy instruction touches on each of these strands. So Carly walked you through some sample instruction for our K two students. And now we're going to look at our tier one literacy instruction through the lens of our three, five students. Both Benchmark Advance and Adelante, which is our aligned dual immersion curriculum, are centered around building content and vocabulary knowledge through rigorous and complex texts related to a unit topic. Each of the units in Benchmark Advance and Adalante focus on an essential question, which fosters knowledge building and collaborative conversations. This essential question is the cornerstone of the unit and is continually touched upon as students are introduced to a variety of texts that are related to the topic. Vocabulary is key to reading comprehension. Readers cannot understand what they're reading without knowing what the majority of those words mean. And children with better vocabularies tend to read more easily than those with a limited vocabulary. The common core ELA standards call for teachers to engage students in close reading. During close reading, students read a piece of complex text multiple times for multiple purposes. These texts serve as a vehicle for the heavy lift of teaching that upper strand of our Scarborough's rope and target key skills such as vocabulary, language structures, word study and background knowledge. In a few moments, we're going to walk through an example of a close reading that students would do in their classroom. Students engage in interactive read alouds, which are a good balance to the heavy lift of close reading that I just mentioned and helps to develop that joy of reading that we want to see in all of our students. We will also spend a little more time looking at an example of an interactive read aloud and why it's so important for the literacy development of our students. Language and grammar are taught in the context of these complex texts rather than as standalone lessons. This interwoven nature of the instruction enables students to further their knowledge of that unit topic while targeting the language comprehension strand of Scarborough's rope. As we'll discuss later in the presentation, the reading and writing components of our literacy instruction are very interconnected. Benchmark texts are used as an anchor for writing instruction as students work their way through all three writing types, opinion, informational explanatory and narrative. All students benefit from the scaffolds and supports that teachers put into place during tier one instruction. But for our multilingual learners, these supports are essential. Daily explicit vocabulary instruction is critical in both teaching our M L Ls to read and developing their English proficiency. By explicit instruction, we mean providing a student friendly definition, showing how a word is used in context and often providing a visual reference for them as well. Multilingual learners require repeated exposure to new vocabulary and multiple opportunities to use this vocabulary in their own speaking and writing. As we shared at an earlier board meeting, when we presented our multilingual learner plan, we want to come from an asset based approach and value what our students are bringing to the classroom. We want to teach students to make the connection between the words that are same or similar in English and in their primary language are called cognates. Each unit of Benchmark includes a list of all the vocabulary words that have Spanish cognates that teachers can utilize in their writing, in their, in their teaching. Each lesson in Benchmark includes a range of embedded integrated ELD supports, which the teacher can select on, select from depending on the student need. These supports can range from sentence frames to graphic organizers to extensive modeling. It's crucial to provide numerous opportunities for our multilingual learners to develop their oral language in order to share their experiences, offer their opinions and have meaningful conversations with their peers. Teachers need to frequently check for student understanding and modify their instruction as needed. But this is especially important for our multilingual learners. We're now going to dive into two aspects of our literacy block, close reading and interactive read alouds. We're going to start with close reading. So this text by Fisher and Fry sums up exactly why the practice of close reading is so important for our students. Rigorous and complex texts require several reads in order for students to uncover layers of meaning, analyze how a text works and to evaluate the author's point of view. Throughout their literacy block, students engage in the close reading of complex texts. The knowledge gained from each exposure to the text not only adds to their knowledge of the current text in hand, but they carry it with them as they encounter other texts and concepts, adding to that bank of knowledge. We're now going to walk through an example of this tier one instruction and demonstrate the various ways that students interact with the text during their literacy block. So throughout the week, students are taking part in reading, word study and writing mini lessons along with an interactive read aloud and small group instruction. We're going to walk through what a week of those 20 minute reading mini lessons would look like. So today we're going to be looking at a piece of text from the fifth grade curriculum. This passage is taken from the novel Esperanza Rising and is part of the fifth grade unit entitled Recognizing Author's Point of View. The essential question for this unit is how can other perspectives help us evaluate the world? This text ties in perfectly with that question. As we look at the world from the perspective of a 13 year old girl living a life of privilege in Mexico, whose family is forced to migrate to California during the Great Depression and become farm workers. So as you can see here, on day one, our first reading of the passage is focused on students understanding that big idea. So identifying those key events and the details and then working together to summarize the passage. The structure of the initial reading is really dependent on the student needs and maybe a combination of a read aloud, partner reading or independent reading. Then through a sequence of I do, we do, you do, students work on summarizing these key events. And then on day two, the second read, we're focusing on developing fluency and having the students read with feeling and sounding like the characters. The third interaction with the story requires students to dig deeper into the meaning of this text and work on drawing inferences. The fourth interaction with this text is centered around literacy features and analyzes adages, similes and idioms living within the text. And all week we're planning and organizing an opinion essay based on the text that we're reading. So in thinking back to Scarborough's rope, all the strands of language comprehension are hit through these multiple interactions. And in looking at this chart, you can see that each of these lessons addresses multiple in ELA standards ranging from reading, writing, language to listening and speaking. So for our examples tonight, we're going to dive into the third read of this chapter from Esperanza Rising, just called Asparagus. We're going to dig deeper into the story as we do a close reading focusing on drawing inferences from the text. So in front of you, you have the student text for close reading right here. So you can pull that out. And you can open up to the page that I flagged for you right there, which is page 22. So as we go through this close reading experience, remember that if we're in the classroom, this would be the third time we had been working with this text. And our prior interactions with it included documenting the key events and details in order to summarize this text and then also a focus on fluency. So before you begin, I'd like you just to quickly skim and scan the text, just pages 22 and 23, just to familiarize yourself with the passage. So just take a moment to do that. Okay. I think most of you are ready. All right. So today we're going to be learning about how to draw an inference about a character based on text evidence and share our ideas with a partner. Remember when we use text evidence to figure things out about characters, setting or plot that the author doesn't explicitly say is called drawing and inference. So we're going to focus on just a few paragraphs from this passage to find text evidence in order to infer as to how our main character Esperanza is feeling. As we read a section of Asparagus today, our close reading question is, why is Esperanza so angry in the story? How does the author show us that she's angry? So we have your directions over here. What I would like you to do is on your own, please reread paragraphs 10 to 13. I highlighted the, those paragraphs for you there. And as you're reading that, I want you to be thinking, what can you infer from this story, from these paragraphs? And what I would like you to do with the highlighter in front of you is highlight your text evidence from those paragraphs and write down your inference in the margin about how Esperanza is feeling. Just paragraphs 10 to 13. Yes. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's what good students do. Take a few moments to do that, please. And just give me a thumbs up when you're ready. Okay. Now in keeping with the theme of modeling, what we do in the classroom, I would love for you to turn to partner next to you and share not only your inference, but the text evidence you're using to support that inference. Go ahead. Okay. I'm going to bring you back. And I would love for you to either share your inference or you can share your partner's inference, either, either one. Exactly. So the author's not explicitly saying Esperanza is very frustrated and angry, but you're inferring that from the evidence in front of you. Exactly. Thank you. Any other ahahs, any other inference you were able to draw from that? Passage there. She is really excited about that. Was anyone based on that? And then Esperanza's kind of reaction to that, able to infer how Esperanza was feeling about Isabella's excitement about the camp?
Who's the, you know, adult? She interprets, she interprets something for them. She points out that the Mexicans aren't going to be able to swim into the pool until the end of the week, just before it's cleaned. And so there's a, there's a lack of justice there. The Mexicans can only swim on Friday. And then, and Hortensia also looks at Esperanza. She looks because she knows Esperanza is going to get it. Going to understand what this means.
Exactly. So while the little one's excited, Hortensia and Esperanza are feeling that unjust and unfair feeling, that feeling inferior. Very good. Okay. So because of time. Okay, so because of time constraints, we're going to end there. But if we were in a classroom, the next step would be for students to write about their inference and their related text evidence. Depending on the students in front of me, I would need to scaffold as needed. I would utilize the integrated ELD supports, have them read in partners, utilize a sentence starter and model multiple inferences from the story as well. Okay, so we're going to shift over to talking about interactive read alouds. So interactive read alouds can be a powerful tool to develop both that love of reading we want to see in all our children and support them along their path to becoming skilled readers. Marilyn Jaker Adams said that the single most important activity for building the knowledge required for eventual success in reading is reading to children. As Kirsten will talk about a little later, the importance of background knowledge cannot be stressed enough. Our students come to us with a wide range of experiences and contexts. Using interactive read alouds as a mean to build background knowledge widens their view of the world and adds to that bank of knowledge they can pull from as they interact with other texts. Interactive read alouds also make complex texts and unfamiliar vocabulary more accessible. And the more support we can provide around acquiring vocabulary, the better as vocabulary and comprehension go hand in hand. An effective read aloud also includes the teacher modeling their metacognitive skills or what good readers do as they read. So things such as predicting, monitoring comprehension, rereading, inferencing, summarizing. So this very brief video shows a teacher doing an interactive read aloud of the text we're just looking at a few moments ago, Esperanza Rising. So let's take a look and see how this teacher is using this novel to engage students.
Mama, no, said Esperanza. She turned to Tio Luis and said, I hate you. This again, right? She's feeling extremely emotional about this. Tio Luis ignored her. And Ramona, if Esperanza is to be my daughter, she must have better manners. In fact, today I will look into boarding schools where they can teach her to act like a lady. Then he turned his horse, dug his spurs into the animal and rode away. Esperanza began to weep to her. She grabbed Mama's arm and said, why, why did you tell him that? But Mama was not listening to her. She was looking up as if consulting the angels. Finally, she said, Alfonso, Hortensia, we must talk with Abuelita. Esperanza and Miguel, come inside. You are old enough to hear the discussions. But Mama, Mama took Esperanza by the shoulders and faced her. Mija, my daughter, do not worry. I know what I'm doing. Think time predictions, think time predictions. I bet you have some wheels turning about what might happen next. But before we go there, I want to focus on what we're looking at today. We saw definitely a strong emotional response to something that happened in this part of the story. What do you think was the most important plot event from our read aloud today?
As you can see in the video, the teacher is modeling expressive reading, focusing on making predictions and connecting to larger themes. The teacher's engaging students in the text and adding to their bank of knowledge. Kirsten's now going to discuss the importance of knowledge building and how we address this in our literacy instruction.
Forgive me if I start copying. I don't have COVID.
It's okay.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to read along with me this quote up here. I'll, I'll read the words in black. I'll ask you to hop in on the blue words. There's that the
key factor in reading comprehension.
Isn't abstract skill, it's
how much relevance knowledge this reader has.
There. Or
general academic knowledge and vocabulary.
And just like Tracy said, students need multiple exposures to multiple types of text to build knowledge and make connections to the content. Students who don't get a chance to acquire deep knowledge because they're jumping from one topic to another without the repetition and deep dives aren't likely to retain the information or acquire new vocabulary. Benchmark Advanced at Adelante or Dual Immersion aligned materials do offer these multiple exposures. Forgot I'm in charge of the clicker. Thank you. All right. So this is some content for K two in our benchmark program. So K two focuses primarily, actually, this is unit seven, sorry, and it's called History and Culture is the name of the unit. And the content in K two focuses primarily on the past and why it's important. And then the learning flows to evolving communities and shaping societies in third through fifth. Year after year, students continue to build on the prior content and vocabulary through reading, talking and writing about the texts. And in Benchmark, students practice the same overall themes through their elementary years. So you can see the themes are very connected and they are deepening their knowledge and understanding of similar content. Because they have something to build on. You can see here how the content and essential questions flow from grade to grade. Each week, students learn from two to three brand new texts. These texts are directly connected to the content and the essential question of the unit. In addition, there are multiple opportunities for the read alouds that we just saw, which also further support the knowledge and vocabulary, but that vocabulary building. And at the elementary level, literacy development happens in all content areas. The social studies curriculum does exactly the same thing that Benchmark does. It takes students through reading and writing experiences that build on the prior year's knowledge. New content is added and layered as students move through the grades. In our new discovery science curriculum, which we just adopted this year, so excited about that. And the program, students are engaged in watching content related videos. They're doing hands-on experiments, they're reading informational texts and they're writing. All of these literacy experiences and opportunities continue to develop, to develop their reading and writing skills outside of the ELA block. And just like Benchmark, each year students will be adding on to their current content knowledge with new related content. As you can see, the progression in K through five right there. So really increasing their ability to make connections and then apply their new knowledge. And like Tracy mentioned earlier, knowledge is not only cumulative, it grows exponentially. And research has says that those with a rich base of knowledge find it easier to learn more. They have something to Velcro or attach their new learning to. So our job is to level the playing field for all students as they come in with different levels of knowledge and experiences. And our core curriculum can do that when we focus on literacy in all content areas. So as you can see from the curriculum on the tables over there, there's our ELA curriculum, some samples from social studies and science. And we have no shortage of high quality curriculum and resources. As Tracy also mentioned, the reading and writing connection is very strong and literacy, they're highly connected. And the experience that you just went through and in the interactive read aloud, you could see how students are gaining background knowledge. And after the repeated readings are able to make multiple connections at multiple times with the, with the context of the text. So Benchmark does use the anchor text. That was what Tracy showed you, the Asparagus text. And that's where students read and write to the content related questions that that come up. So students are, teachers are preparing the students with the information they need to be able to effectively write and respond to the content related questions. And here's an opinion sample in response to agreeing or disagreeing with the idea that America is a place of fairness and opportunity, which came directly from the Asparagus lesson that you practice. The way that students are able to experience this text allows them to be able to see the perspective of the characters in the story. And, and they're able to agree or disagree with them. They're able to find evidence and examples from the text to support their opinions. So without multiple exposures and rich conversations around the text, it's highly unlikely that the students could clearly respond to the prompt. So as we're talking about writing in NVUSD, there's been an ask from many teachers to help support writing instruction. So right now we use the process writing instruction that's in Benchmark. And we also write to sources and teachers also use the writing to sources instruction in Benchmark. And that that writing is done within the content, context of the content. And the writing experiences cover all the genres, as Tracy said. So in response to teachers asking for more assistance and additional writing support, we created an opportunity last summer for a cohort of teachers to read a book called The Writing Revolution. These teachers are currently trying out some of the strategies that they read about in their classrooms. And in fact, next week we have a meeting so that we can see how those strategies worked out in their classroom. So if we find that those strategies are effective, we're going to figure out a way to scale that experience for more teachers. We've also brought back the district writing assessment this year. It's taken a hiatus for a couple of years, but since teachers are wanting more writing instruction and we're feeling the need to see how our kids are doing right now. We're going to be doing that this year. Then that way we can see how our kids are doing and identify our next steps for writing instruction. So I will now pass to Carly, who will let us know about the other ways we are assessing student writing.
Thank you. All right. So when we talk about assessments, we wanted to, we have thoughtfully built an assessment system that provides data for both kinds of assessment of learning and for learning. When we talk about this, assessments of learning are typically administered at the end of each grading period and evaluate a student's understanding by comparing his or her achievements against a class, district or national level. And this is, you'll see here on the screen, the levels that we look at for of learning. So at the kinder level, we use something called ESGI, which is educational software guiding instruction. First grade, we use quick phonics assessment. A second grade, we use star phonics. Those are phonics screeners where we really determine how they're progressing against those, those end of year standards, as well as how they're progressing on the foundational skills continuum. And then in third and fifth, we look at star reading. So the other thing we do do is teachers also utilize assessments for learning. So that is during our instruction. We want to know how that's working and if students are grasping those concepts. Those are aligned to our priority standards. And we're really focused on giving such things as curriculum embedded, weekly assessments, teacher created formative assessments, and even something as simple as an exit ticket on the way out to check if they've gotten that concept for the day. But as a system, we are currently committed to doing one learning sprint a trimester. And we're focused on using both this larger data and then also the formatives that the teachers are making to ensure that we're getting, getting the learning that we need from our students. So while we talk about literacy, we thought it was important to mention the connected literacy intervention that's happening at our elementary sites. Last year, we implemented Benchmark Phonics Intervention Program that reinforces the core ELA program we've been talking about tonight. Our elementary interventionist utilized materials that are structured and explicit as we've been talking to you tonight about. And they're aligned to how the, how we teach students to how to read in tier one, that core whole group context. This also extends to our students with special needs. Our ed specialists are supporting students with explicit systematic phonics instruction using something called Orton Gillingham and Barton. So we're making those connections through all of our classrooms to support all students. I'm going to let Rebecca Albertazzi, our lead interventionist, share the power of this resource and give you some insight into how we're supporting reading intervention at the elementary level.
Hi, my name is Becky Albertazzi and I teach reading intervention at Phillips Elementary School. I teach six different reading groups each day for struggling readers in grades first through fifth grade. I'm currently using the Benchmark Phonics Intervention Program and it has four levels from kinder to third grade. And it covers everything from letters, letter names, sounds, all the way up to multi-syllabic words. The program was built using the science of reading and the daily routines include phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary development, reading comprehension and some writing. Students are placed in the program by taking a quick phonics assessment that shows their instructional gaps. And it places in one of the four levels based on their needs in the data. This program gives the teachers everything they need to run successful intervention groups. So this is the little teacher's manual. And this is the students magazine. I don't need to search for additional letters, cards, everything you need comes right with the program and the students love this colored magazine. It has fiction and nonfiction. It's in color. There's even a game on the back that they play and they use this game. While I give them a quick progress monitoring assessment every five to 10 lessons and the assessment is included right in the magazine for the teacher. And there's also sentence dictation assessment as well. I love that everything is included and I get to give the assessment by while the students play the phonics based game. My interventions are filling the students instructional gaps based on data. Some of my groups may only meet for four weeks. Well, some of them might meet for several months depending on their instructional needs. But what I really appreciate is because of the efficiency of the program and that it has everything I need, I'm able to see more students. And I'm seeing a lot of growth. Hi, my name is Becky Albertazzi and I teach reading intervention at Phillips Elementary.
Yay. Okay. Louisa Moats says, informed teachers are best insurance against reading failure. While programs are very helpful tools, programs don't teach, teachers do. So our job is to continue to move the learning forward for our teachers and in turn for our students. So as we begin to learn more and more about best practices and the science of reading, we have developed multiple opportunities to get our teachers the knowledge they need to know about how these research-based practices can inform their classroom instruction. Our homegrown SOR Science of Reading cohorts and PD Day sessions have impacted approximately 121 teachers, interventionists and principals. And we are so excited to be able to offer in-depth letters training to 41 teachers, interventionists and ed specialists this year. These teachers have committed to a two-year, two years of training to improve reading outcomes for students in our district. We feel strongly that this knowledge and training will begin to move the dial and get more and more students to proficiency.
So James Clear wrote an article about motion versus action. It's about the idea that we often get in the, caught in the motion of planning and preparing, but never really move forward with the action necessary to make real change that leads to real results. The Science of Reading cohorts that we did last year had teachers taking part in short targeted learning sprints. As a result of these learning sprints, teachers made small shifts in their instruction that led to student growth. That is turning motion into action. I saw this for myself earlier this year. My daughter's a fourth grader here at MBUSD and her teacher was in our Science of Reading cohort last year. One of our meetings focused on the importance of vocabulary instruction. So a few months ago, my daughter was playing soccer in the house. And when I asked her to please not kick the ball in the living room, she quickly replied, Mom, why are you using your authority to enforce so many rules? I, I quickly realized these sounded a lot like the words in the fourth grade government and action unit. So after talking more, after talking more with my daughter, I learned that the teacher was putting her learning from our cohort into action in her classroom. She had been providing targeted vocabulary instruction, teaching students the words in context, utilizing engaging strategies and then giving them a goal of using some of their vocabulary words at home. That's what we're striving for. And that's what we're seeing more and more. Teachers putting their learning into action and as a result, students making tangible growth. We're so lucky to have some of our amazing NVUSD teachers in the room that joined us for the Science of Reading cohort last year and are currently taking part in our letters training. Rebecca Laco, Christina Lawrence and Tracy Sims. They're happy to share their experience with both of these learning opportunities. Hello, I'm Christina Lawrence. I teach at Brown's
Hello, I'm Christina Lawrence. I teach at Brown's Valley. I'm a kindergarten teacher. And I did the Science of Reading cohort last year. It started in February and I remember distinctly because kindergarten last year in coming out of COVID, there were a lot of behavior issues. We had a lot of emotional issues. Regulation was an issue and just socialization because they were four when everything shut down. So I was dealing with a lot of that. And I remember when I started the Science of Reading, I went, oh yeah, this is how to teach. This is what I need to be teaching. Okay, so I've got toolbox and I've got second step down. We're all sitting and listening now and we're going to start learning. And so it was super impactful in my classroom because I started doing the learning sprint. And I immediately started implementing all of the strategies that they were teaching us to use. And it just, it, it reminded me, oh yeah, I am a good teacher and this is how I teach. And so when they offered the letters opportunity, I was like, yes, please. I'm a master now at social emotional because I've done all the toolbox stuff and all the second step stuff. And I feel like I'm really strong in that. But as a teacher of kindergarten, I would love to know what the new research is on reading and how to best implement it in my classroom and how to give my kids the best of both worlds. The social emotional kindergartners need to learn how to become students and how to become members of a community. And they also need to learn how to read. It's the most important thing. And we talk about that all the time in our class. Why do we need to learn how to read? Because then you can do anything. So they know reading is one of the most important things we do in kindergarten, other than becoming humans in a community that get along and know how to solve problems. But letters is, I love it. I'm nerding out. It's fabulous. I'm already way far ahead and not supposed to be, but there's just like every time I read something, you know, they're talking about the brain and how, oh, the, you know, when you, when you intervene, you can correct these issues that these kids have that I see in my classroom. And so I'm like fast forwarding head like, okay, what do we do? What do we do? What do we do? And so it's wonderful. I'm really enjoying it. It's very impactful and it applies to what I do every day. And I'm thinking about it every day in my classroom. I'm tweaking my instruction every day. I'm using Benchmark Phonics and seeing, you know, the pieces of that and why we do it. But then I also know from letters, what foundational skills are most important, how to teach them, and how to make the most impact in my classroom. So I love it. I'm so glad that we have this opportunity and I really feel that having a program like that, having the science of reading, having the letters program, just educating us as teachers. It just reminds you what good teaching is because you get bogged down, you get stuck in the day to day and you get in your routines and you just, you're, you're teaching, right? And then you go to a class or you read a book and you're like, oh yeah, oh yeah, okay. And so it just, it really focuses in and makes makes everything more impactful and more enjoyable too, because you know what you're doing is science-based and research-based and the best that you can give your kids. And that's all that we want as teachers is the very best that we can give our kids. So thank you.
She basically said everything that needed to be said. I'm also in the letters cohort along with a few of my colleagues at Willow. My name's Rebecca Lacoe and I teach first grade at Willow. And during the letters training, we choose focused students and we apply our learning directly to these students. Just before conferences, one of the lessons reflecting upon a specific student who is a puzzle in my brain. The lesson had us, you know, write down everything we know about the student, the questions we have, how we can answer those questions through looking at work samples, conversations with the student, and what else we might need to know. I'm blessed at our school to have colleagues in the letters training who I can talk to about this student. And then at conference, I was able to ask all the questions that I had and able to get some important answers to help solve the puzzle for the student. So it's really about exactly what you said. Being able to bring the best to our students, being able to have all the latest knowledge and to work with colleagues who have that knowledge as well. So we're, I'm very thankful for the opportunity.
Hi, my name's Tracy Sims and I am a first grade teacher at Canyon Oaks Elementary School. Just Christina said so much of what I'm thinking all the time. First, I want to say thank you, thank you for letting me be a part of this. Um, so I'll just share two brief examples. One happened just the other day at our PLC where I was sitting around with the other first grade teachers. And we were talking about our recent learning sprint and about our reading groups. And we do a lot of reading group activities in our afternoons. And last year, teaching first grade, you know, was also a mystery because the kindergartners had been taught on, you know, online during COVID, which I taught kindergarten online during COVID and wow. Somehow we built a community. And I got a look into families, which was also cool, right? Okay. So I felt the same, like I have classroom community down, you know, I, I'm fairly good at classroom management. And I, but we were talking about how how different since the science of reading has been brought to us and now letters, our reading groups look. They are so much more skills-based. So now I get a look into like, okay, yes, I have a group of six. How can I pull these three, you know, strategically while those three are doing something else so that I can focus on what they need? And so our reading groups, you know, behind the scenes are built that way now. The other thing I wanted to share was one of my case study students is a multilingual learner. And this sweet kid, he came to me this year knowing, he knows English, but he's a very mild speaker. He's very quiet in the classroom and he came in not knowing all of his letter name and sounds. And he is now blending words. So that's all I have to say about the program. It is amazing. It's beautiful. It's what teachers needed to be better teachers. Thank you.
So I want, I want to thank Rebecca and Tracy and Christina for coming tonight and, and sharing. It's just super impressive, the work that they're doing with students. And I'm glad they had an opportunity to share that with you all. So our last slide tonight is around supporting a love of literacy in every classroom. And so I'm excited to share that we were able to leverage one-time funds to, and we're starting the process to enhance classroom libraries, school libraries, as well as expand grade level curriculum-aligned trade books for interactive read-alouts that align with the curriculum. And also provide home book bags so students have access to books at home. So you'll be seeing in the next few months, purchase orders coming forward for board approval for these purchases. So we really want to make sure to increase students' access to high-quality literature. As a child, I had abundance of books in my home and it really encouraged me to be an avid reader. And I think that that's what we need to do for our students. So I'm, I'm glad that we're able to use some of our one-time funds to continue to support a love of reading for our students. So and I want to thank my lovely team here and their very comprehensive presentation tonight. I hope you enjoyed engaging in this immersive experience and, and what it was like to be a first grader and a fifth grader in MBUSD. So thank you all. That concludes our report and then our presentation and then I can actually, there we go. I feel like I really am like skilled enough to like click the clicker. So now we're open for any questions or discussion that you all might have. I know that was a long experience.
So as the only board member that has an elementary school student, I'm really impressed with the presentation today because I finally know when my son comes back with one of these all filled out with all the notes and highlights, what it actually means. So thank you very much for, for all of the explanation and have a, I have a much better understanding of what you guys are going through and what it is, how you guys are teaching. And I'm as a scientist, I love seeing that science of reading coming because when my older one went through, it was all about iRead. And I was like, why are we doing iRead? I didn't really quite understand why there was such a focus on that. And it was, I, I felt like there should be more. So I'm glad that this transition happened. And that we're, we're seeing, I'm hoping that in a couple of years, when, when these kids are going through, all our teachers are trained in letters that it will definitely be beneficial for all of our students. So thank you very much. I have a question about maybe more of a higher level question. So we have these teacher credentialing programs locally, I think. What's our feeder? Usually it's
Sonoma State or UC Davis.
No, if they are teaching this in their credentialing program and because we're gonna have, well, we have a teacher shortage. So we're hoping that if we're going to ask teachers to go through these programs, that they come prepared. And, and to have that focus already. So do we know if there's any anything in those programs?
I, I can't speak specifically to whether like Sonoma State or UC Davis offer like Science of Reading as you know, part of their reading methodology courses. I do know that the, the, do you know? There's, there's definitely a movement.
They, they're, they actually are at the state level talking about incorporating the science of reading.
That's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah.
They just announced that like a couple.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the state has been working and particularly the CTC has been working to improve the training for teachers in the elementary for multiple subject credentials in literacy. And so in the past, they've had like a certain test they had to pass in order to get their, to earn their credential. And so they are looking at that assessment to see if they can make it more relevant to what students are doing these days. Because it's based on sort of the reading from the 1990s in terms of what we knew about reading instruction.
And for our current teachers, I know we have a couple cohorts going through the letters program. Is the goal then to try to get every elementary teacher kind of trained in this as well, or is it?
We would love to train every elementary school teacher if we, if we, we would seek approval for that from the board and, and this, it's, it's a considerable investment of time on the part of teachers. But as other teachers begin to hear the words that were just spoken by this incredible group of teachers, we really feel that momentum will build towards increased numbers of teachers wanting to, to engage in this, in these cohorts. So we would hope to have another cohort of at least 40 teachers next year. We'll see what the interest level is. But again, I really feel strongly that if more teachers are hearing and seeing the benefit of the programs that we're offering, we'll see the interest levels rise. Yes, aren't they? Aren't they though? Yeah.
Yeah. Having stewards of the program that so well articulate the benefit and the connection to the kids, I have to believe is a wonderful asset as you, as the, the need for PD in that area grows.
How many elementary school, elementary level teachers do we have?
I think we have about 250, is it 250? So 40, 41, there are some specialists in that, in that group as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trusty riser. I, I know that you have comments.
Thank you so much. This was such an interesting and comprehensive presentation. I got my credential in 1995 in the era of whole language. So it's really amazing to me to see laid out and, you know, explained so clearly and, and I appreciate it also just the, the actual direct experience, student experience, you know, participating in that. It's just amazing to see how far we've come. You know, when I got my credential, it was really like expose kids to books. Read that, that words, you know, like it was sort of, it was just so minimal. And one, yes. And then, and then I remember the phrase someone saying in a staff development thing about the, the approach being spray and pray. Right? Where it was just like throwing it and some kids get it like that. So and I wanted to speak to, you know, the, the, the teacher comments about how good it feels to understand it and to know that you're doing exactly the best thing that you can be doing. Because people don't always understand that that stress aspect of being a teacher because you want so badly for all of your kids to succeed. And, and if you're not, and my experience as a teacher, I was not given the appropriate tools and training. So there was a lot, you know, there was a lot of that diagram of the arrows and circles. And a lot, and then to see the, you know, look how this intervention and then the assessment is right in the back and oh, look, the puzzle for the kids to do while you're doing. Like it just is amazing to see how far we've come in terms of understanding what teachers need in the classroom. And I think what I, you know, I, I hope comes out of this for whoever listens or watches the video later is just the enormous complexity of the work. Because so many people, in particular in primary grades, but just think of it as, oh, it must be so nice and fun and you read cute stories and the kids are so cute. And then they do a nice drawing after like what, what an easy job that must be. And it's so cute, isn't it? Aren't they cute? And so you have really brought to life the incredible complexity of this work. And I lived it. So I understood that already, but I just think that it's so important for our community at large to understand that. And I'm so grateful that our district and our, our leadership cabinet and superintendent and the board all understand the importance of giving the appropriate training and tools. And I almost cried when Pat was talking about the book, you know, the funding of the books. Just, I mean, my first classroom, I had like some sets I bought with my own money at Costco. And then, you know, the veteran teacher who was my counterpart at second grade gave me a box of like exactly 30 crummy reject paperbacks so that I could do the routine that we did, which was put them in a circle and start out with every kid with their own book reading. It was just scrounging for crumbs. And so I'm grateful that we don't make our teachers do that. Because that just makes the work harder and then the kids are the ones that suffer. And then the last comment I'll make, I'm gonna try to be, I'll cut it off, but just the other thing that I just feel so heartened by is the consistency that we are providing our students. It used to just be haphazard. And if you got the teacher that really knew her stuff, then those kids were really soaring. And if you got the new teacher, which I, I mean, I know you all knew that experience of, oh God, the kids I taught in my first year. But you know, the new teacher, it was really just like cross your fingers. And so I just am really proud of the district for the way we are supporting teachers and providing that professional consistency in the delivery of the content because that will also serve to close the gap. And I will end by repeating the great quote from, I don't remember which one of you, but programs don't teach, teachers do.
Right.
Well, I'm retired. English teachers, naturally this thrills me. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of tired, but this is me thrilled. It's been an exciting night though, but in many ways, but I'm really happy. You know, I love looking at the screen and seeing the teachers who are going through the training. A couple of them I recognize and I'm going, oh yeah, they'd be in there first. They're the enthusiasts. You know, those well, Jodi Ortiz is a friend of mine in American Canyon and she's an enthusiast, you know, and she, and, and it's great. That's, that's just, I love to see that. And the teacher who was talking about the story with his students, I was observing how the children were really paying attention to him, which is of course every teacher's dream. I, I remember I thought I had a class really entranced at Napa High. And when I finished, you know, pointed something out, one of the girls raised her hand and said, what color eyeshadow are you? Okay, start over. He was using academic language. He was speaking in complete sentences and he was using He was using academic language. He was speaking in complete sentences and he was using actually. High level academic language to, I believe, you know, to little kids sitting on the floor. And that's, and I have seen that in some of the schools that I've visited this year. And that's very important because that will serve them well when they're, you know, older. And to learn how to express themselves precisely, that is very important. Bringing back the the district writing assessment. A lot of people had a love hate relationship. I remember we were making math teachers do the grade them, help us grade them. That was, you know, kind of hilarious and. But that, say what you will, it's a snapshot and everybody's doing it and we really need our students. To write they and it's just because if you can write clearly, it means you're thinking clearly. And that's important for our society. And one other thing, by the way, I really liked the book Esperance Rising, so I was like reading ahead and. You know, of course, Senator Name Means Hope, so I'm gonna feel optimistic about this, no matter what struggles they have, but the the. The the you had a quotation from Natalie Wexler in there and of course, I bought the book. The Knowledge Gap and gave it to him to read, you know, this is our hobby horse because. There is, there does appear to be a wave of ignorance that occasionally wafts over the culture and. The country and just the. It's better to be smart than the other way. And I think that and and giving. Children, when they find things, they're, they like being smart. They like to learn things, they like to know things. It's something that's concrete. It's good for them. It increases their background knowledge. So they can learn other things more easily. So yeah, I'm all for that. So this is, this is really quite inspiring.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did have a couple of questions. Particularly around this idea that we would read the book aloud, or not the book, the excerpt, I should say aloud. And then go through the excerpt four more times. That's five times through a single text potentially. Wouldn't the kids be sick and tired of that excerpt by the time you get to the third one, much less the fifth time?
Wants to wait, I'll start and I'll see if anyone wants to wait. And so I believe the intent is that every single time you look at the text, you're looking at something different. And so we really do want our students to think critically around the different ideas that are surfacing in a very complex text. So when you're reading something like Esperance Rising, it's a fifth grade text, but the ideas in there are pretty, are pretty complicated. And we're trying to target different standards as they read for different purposes. And yes, maybe students might get like after, like we're looking at the same. Paragraphs or whatever, but we're looking for different reasons. I don't know if.
I'll just.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that, yes, that's a possibility. I think teachers breathe life into it and bring. Bring the fun and the engagement and it's, as Tracy mentioned, it's twenty minutes. It's not, that's not the entire ELA block. So it's a twenty minute block, which is pretty tight. So teachers can can engage the students around that twenty minute block.
Just one other thing too, just like we did today with that third read, we're focusing with the first read, we are doing the overall passage that's in there, getting that, the, you know, the gist, the key ideas and summarizing. But for those subsequent reads, we're focusing on different portions of that passage. So they're not reading like the same four paragraphs, five times in a row. So. We're focusing like close reading, we're just diving in on certain parts of the passage to go deeper into that text. So it is, it's different every day. And like they said, it's it's twenty minutes a day, so it's just out of the whole day. It's it's a quick portion of the day, but. That multiple exposures allows you to attack that text for different purposes.
Trusty Garcia, I I just, I I do really believe in the power of the instructional read aloud. So I I think I think it's a great question. And I think the staff's done an amazing job of answering it, but I think that. It's the difference between, I just like to add, because it's a strategy that I'm super passionate about, is that. That it's the distinction between just a read aloud and an instructional read aloud, right? And so teachers are doing a tremendous amount of preparation and planning for that. Read aloud to evolve into something that has multiple instructional purposes, right? To be able to address the standards and that's. You know, very, very effective research based strategy in order to, you know, boost our students' reading comprehension to a high degree. So refreshing as a superintendent of schools to be talking about this topic up here. Thanks for asking the question.
Yeah, I mean, my intuition was just that at the. Fourth or fifth time, they might be tuning out just because they've been through this paragraph so many times now. And it's like, I don't want to deal with this text anymore.
The opportunity. Or it might allow for the opportunity of kind of retention of the idea as you're learning to read and you're learning new concepts and learning new words. Sometimes that repetitiveness presented different ways allows for real learning traction to take place. So yes. I I can see why you think they might lose interest, or it could spark that idea that, okay, I understand it now in this context. And now I can apply that level understanding over here.
Well, my teacher, my teacher at Berkeley. When we didn't understand Paradise Laws, you know, section of Paradise Laws, he'd say, read it again. And I remember thinking. He just doesn't want to teach us. Well, he was teaching us something. Stanley Fish, he was a very famous instructor, but yeah, we did get it. I mean, and then all of a sudden, you know, you're noticing other things about the text. You are understanding it. There's a, there's a lot of value to rereading.
And and I think to Tracy's point around, they're not reading the same, the entire passage again. They're reading paragraphs to look for a specific thing. And really, it's training our students as they, even as they go through life and they're taking assessments, whether it's the. The casp or whether it's the bar exam, right, that they're gonna go through and. Reread for different reasons or figure out, like, if they go look at the questions, then go back to the reading to identify what it is that. And find that text evidence in the text. So, I mean, it's preparing students for that rigorous level of work that they're gonna do in. Middle school and high school and beyond. I mean, rereading is a really key strategy and they're not reading the whole text again. They really are looking at certain paragraphs.
Okay, I mean, I just think there's the possibility for some students to tune out because it's the fifth time and they're like, I can't do this anymore, you know? I didn't really see an opportunity in the presentation where books sort of play into it. It sounded like this was. Almost entirely our online program. How do books fit into this process?
I know that we brought some displays of books that are used as part of the core material. I know for the instructional purpose. That the it is excerpts that are being used, but there is the opportunity for. Students to access whole books. I'm gonna let, if someone wants to speak to like how teachers utilize. Whole books in their their instruction. My classroom book.
On the mic, yeah.
Benchmark offers the opportunity. We're teaching standards, right? So we go to Benchmark and we see what reading comprehension strategies they want us to teach. Author's Purpose or Retell. And then we can use the. Books that are provided through Benchmark, which you can see up there. They have the big books so that for kindergarten and first, they can see the text. And but we also use our own literature, our own books, our own stories. That relate to the same, we use the same concepts and teach the standards, but we also have our classroom libraries. We know the authors that. Engage students and keep them interested. And to touch back on what you were saying about what that would look like in a kindergarten classroom. I wouldn't read the same book five days in a row and just have them listen. The first day I would read it and tell them, okay, we're gonna be looking for characters and setting and and retell. So we'd read the story the first time. And then answer and ask questions about it. Then the second day, okay, this time when we, after we read it. We are going to act it out and we're gonna retell it. We're gonna see what happens. We do that. And then the third day, like, okay, do you guys remember this book? Let's find some vocabulary words in this book that we're gonna work on. Or if they have text in front of them, let's highlight the site words and let's look for the words that we know. And then maybe the fourth day would be like, okay, now that we know this story, we've read this story, let's talk about this character's experience. What do you think about this? Let's write about it. Give you a sentence to him. You know, I think, and then they would write about it. So it's a progression throughout the week of utilizing that same text for different ways of teaching. Does that make sense? I'm not gonna read them the same book five days in a row the same way. So that's kind of how we do it. But I, do you guys use other material? I mean, the benchmark provides rich reading opportunities, but we also do our own stories.
I I also use my own books and classroom books that are age appropriate and I use them as interactive read alouds, right? And those ones I may read just once, but I I stop and we, and I ask questions, they answer questions, you know. But also I have a very rich classroom library. So in my classroom, there are lots of books. And then I, you know, it's their free reading time. And so I try to give time for that every day. So they're able to go and access books that that they like. And that is totally up to them. They can look at it for the pictures. They can look at it and find their high frequency words. They can do whatever. But I also want them to get a love for reading. And so I think it's really important that they have a wide variety. Of different books in there while also using the Benchmark Phonics Program.
And so just a perspective from the upper grade a little bit. So each unit, the teacher has a wide range of leveled texts that are related to the unit topic. And so they have, we have some that are over there, but so they would have like six sets of one book and then instruction that goes along with it that you would meet in a small group or they could be reading independently. Also, we have Reader's Theater, which are, you know, meant to be interactive, which is great for the oral language. So that's text in hand also. Also, for each grade level in the upper grades, there's a novel that's recommended and a novel study that goes along with it that would guide the teachers and the students through that novel. And also each unit has a recommended list of trade books, so full novels that are aligned to the unit topic, which, as Pat mentioned, we're gonna be purchasing for all teachers. So. Besides working in that student text for close reading, which you had in hand, there are actual hard copy books that we want in students' hands as well.
Can I piggyback on trustee Garcia's question? This is for my fifth grader. He's asking me when we are going to bring back Battle of the Books. Where all of our elementaries. Fourth and fifth graders have an opportunity to read the same set of books. And really test their knowledge. And it was really competitive at. Canyon Oaks and I'm sure at all of the elementary schools when my older one did it. So I guess for my son. What are we planning on bringing that back?
So they read, how many, is it like five books or something?
Yeah, so when I worked at Snow, we we ran it there. So it's basically students form teams and then we have a a set of novels that we all decide upon. And we give each team the set of books and so that between their team, they split up who's reading what. And then they read it and study it. And then we have the Battle of the Books. So it's like we have a whole kind of tournament system set up and then the kids, the two teams face each other and we have trivia questions aligned to each book. And so as a team, they're answering the questions and then whoever wins that battle moves to the next battle and faces another team. And then eventually there's a, like a district championship.
Does every child participate or is it optional? Is it after school?
It's opt-in.
Okay.
It's opt-in and we would do the, we would do the challenges at lunch. We would do it sometimes after school. Kids loved it. Not every, it's not a district thing initiative, so it's site based. I know with COVID, but that just, it stopped and I would love to see that come aboard. It really is a site decision if they're gonna be doing that. But I'm glad you brought that up. It makes me want to reach out to sites because I know when I was a teacher, I loved it, the kids loved it. And I mean, seeing kids cheer about winning book battles is crazy. Pretty amazing. So I'm glad you brought that up. It's something to maybe connect with sites about.
Since you brought it up, I just want to say I bumped at Trader Joe's, I bumped into the library and it went from what, who had retired from West Park and that's where my kids spent, Lori Moore. And both my daughters did the Battle of the Books and my older ones are freshmen at UCLA. And Lori Moore said, I still remember this joke that we had with your daughter's team. We would get in the library and practice. Because they ended up going on and winning the district championship, the brain quakers with two Z's on the end. They named their team, they made posters, it's so cute. And she still remembered. I remember when Kira was trying to remember that name of someone and she just kept saying. That guy, I know that guy was in their practice. And then I talked to my daughter and I said, Mrs. Moore said this and she remembered the joke and my, and of course, my daughter did too. And it was, like, it's really a bonding thing too and like a really. It's nice to have a reading thing be a fun after school activity and not like an academic year in the school day. And nothing that's getting graded, it's just for fun.
Did you have additional?
Yes.
Okay.
So I do appreciate tonight's presentation. Thank you guys for delivering tonight. That was, that was really informative and I. I like seeing that. And I also appreciate that we have. This ELOP money that we're gonna be spending on books. I think that's on our other one time dollars. I can't think of a better use of those dollars than to buy books. So I think that's a good thing.
One quick thing, I. Thank you. I know how much time this took. I know how much heart this took. I appreciate the level of dedication. Commitment to our kids. It was evident in everything you said. And what I truly appreciated about this particular presentation is then. You know, so many times we talk about reading and learning and it's done statistically. And, you know, it's part of the process and it's part of the job for you and for us. What I thoroughly enjoyed about this evening is you broke down the process. You broke down the process of learning, you broke down the process of comprehension. Teaching how you engage a student, what they have access to, the why behind it, to create a true roadmap to learning. And we don't always have access to that information in the format in which you delivered it this evening. So I want to thank you for helping someone like myself. I was not a teacher. I'm not, not married to a teacher. And I do not have all elementary school children. Like I said before, I'm very old. But it's it's really helpful because we hear about it so conceptually. And yes, we go to all the schools and I get to see, I've seen all of you, I get to see snippets of it when we walk around. But to fully be able to digest how it's implemented, to understand what the impact can be. To take into consideration the learning lag that has transpired. And then, and then build kind of application around that of. How we're going to to transform the program with children's abilities. It's. It was unbelievably helpful. I know the time it took and I want to thank you. I have a great deal of. Faith that we are going to see a lot of progress. And I love the idea that literacy is being woven into everything. I think that it has a place everywhere. And we recognize that. And I think that eventually. As you try to expand the program and the teachers that are involved, that all of that will matriculate from grade to grade to grade. And we will see the impact of your work here. As we work through secondary. So thank you very much.
So thank you, trustees. I do want to start out with just an expression of gratitude, just as a school board. They requested this as a school board, so I just, I don't want to take that for granted. That our governance team here in the school district requested that we do a deep dive and a board study session on. This really, really important topic. So I want to thank you for. Your leadership as the school board and caring so deeply about the quality of instruction. And around literacy instruction in particular, which as we looked at some of the. Information and research that you so brilliantly launched us with, kicked this whole thing off with. Is absolutely critical to the the success of our students beyond just K twelve, right? I just, four things, I'll be quick, I'll try and be quick. Number one, I, it's just really exciting to know that we have this degree of internal expertise in our school district. From the management in the instructional. Services Division to our teachers on special assignment, to our practitioners in the classroom. It's just very, very affirming to know that we have an internal capacity. Around these research based strategies that we know work to make the fundamental difference for students when it comes to reading. You educated the room so much and the public even through this public board meeting around key concepts like the gradual release of responsibility. The importance of differentiation, scaffolding, the use of academic language. Data driven instructional planning, literacy across content areas and the power of the instructional read aloud. So thank you for sharing all of that. I also just, number two, want to commend. Director Matt Manning. And I know that when he onboarded into the position, he was very, very adamant about. adamant about building communities of practice. And I think that that's such a powerful implementation strategy in order to get these, these, uh, uh, research-based instructional strategies implemented for our kids. And so very often, school districts can have the internal expertise, but they struggle on how to advance um, high-quality implementation. And I think that you've really chosen the community of practice as a way to get the scaling to happen across our classrooms. And you just heard from our teacher testimonials, the quality of that model when it comes to implementing these things. So thank you so much for also paying attention to how to implement and support our teachers, um, in a professional learning space. Um, the third is, um, resource allocation. I think that you've demonstrated to the board that so often, you know, through these business items that they're approving, it can seem really mundane and, and just, um, automatic, uh, but, um, you know, they play a critical role in approving um, all of the investments that we know are necessary to defy some of the statistics again that we launched with. And so, um, I, I want to thank you for thinking thoughtfully about resource allocation and bringing forth those resource allocations forward to the board for approval. From the materials and then I just, uh, from the materials, but then also want to think about like the HR side of it all and how we build the human capital around this. Our district, um, even despite declining enrollment, we've made difficult decisions, but we have a team of intervention, um, specialists and at the elementary. And so we know that that's an investment that we made. We know through, through post-pandemic reality, they've had to do a lot of sub-coverage. That, that's not the intent of the investment. But hopefully once this subsides and we get through this, they'll be able to really dig deep into their work. And then, um, lastly, I just want to name that I think it's really, um, just again, one metacognitive moment around, um, the board's governance. Um, that, uh, there's research out there that school boards that spend a significant proportion of their time. I know you've all heard it in your masters of governance training. That school boards that spend a significant proportion of their time focused on student achievement and are intentional around that over time will make a difference, um, in, in terms of their governance in, in impacting the student achievement of our students. And so again, I want to just close with that fourth piece and thanking the school board for caring about the quality of teaching and learning in our district. So amazing job. Um, and thank you. Thank you so much.
That leads us to, um, the end of our board meeting and adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
First by trustee Gracia.
He's the fifth grader who couldn't listen.
Second, second by trustee Riser. All in favor?
Hi.
We are now adjourned.